Make me a copy of everything.
Okay.
Something to interview with.
All right.
I did do it last week when you were gone.
Yeah, one whole day of that conference was devoted to that, so.
And yesterday you were busy.
What do you want?
Yep. It was a very high time.
These were drug weeks. Way before your time, I'm sure.
Oh, that magazine was referenced in one of our presentations.
Oh, okay, yeah, way back in the, I suppose, seventies or something like that, high times.
Because they took a picture from that magazine of what marijuana looked like back then to what the plants look like now.
Oh, yeah, quite a difference.
Very much so.
High-tech.
Very starkly different.
Long time.
Tim is doing a little business and then we'll get started as soon as he gets in here.
Is there any...
He's on the other side of the counter.
Is there any stuff, thing that you guys need for the benefit? Looks like you got a lot.
Well, I guess you got a lot.
I think it's going to be pretty good. I mean, I'm mainly responsible for the kitchen and food and stuff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can I give you a food order then?
I don't know when we're going to still water, if we're going the weekend in order. We have, you have to miss graduation on the benefit, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I mean, right, we're having meeting again tonight, so maybe no more after that.
If you need some, something.
Yeah, well, hey, volunteered our family for five hundred bars.
Oh, my.
But I think we can train all of us, we get covered.
Oh, wow, otherwise, I mean, if you need something like that, I will tell you.
Yeah, right now, I think we've got our food covered.
I didn't realize the connection between Myron's and, uh, Steve, he was the best man in the world. Is that something I say?
Yeah.
Is she?
She's got a problem, and they can't get her to help.
You want me to give them or?
Ah, he'll catch up, I guess.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes of our May fourth meeting? Nothing. Nothing? Is there a motion to approve the minutes and today's agenda? By Johnston, second by Carlson, any discussion? All in favor, signify with saying aye. Motion carries. Any public comments from anyone? Yeah, nothing.
Stabs outside already, I saw.
Maybe we'll take Dylan first, huh?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, I took that, uh, agreement for the road with the game of fish that I did make. Was that last week or two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I did make a couple, uh, changes I'd like to go over, and then if you guys are all right with them, I'll propose that to the contact of game and fish in A three. There was originally language in there between the word project and the word county. In a satisfactory manner at county's own expense, uh, when I spoke with, uh, Mr. Beckwith, the game of fish, he didn't have an issue, uh, if the in a satisfactory manner was taken out of that sentence, so I just took it out. So, as you see now, it just reads, maintain the project at county's own expense and ensure adequate permission for maintenance. Look all right to you guys that way.
Pleased to meet you.
And then in, uh, section B there, um, I did not change paragraph one at all, but I did add sub-paragraph eight. If you guys want to go ahead and give that a quick read and see how it sounds to you. And I'll explain why I worded it the way I did.
Personally, I'm fine with it.
Don't bother me.
The, yeah, the reasoning behind that sub-paragraph is when I talked to Mr. Beckwith, he told me that the agreement that was sent originally was just a boilerplate agreement that they sent to anybody anytime they had one of these projects. I explained what the apprehension was on our part, and then he explained, pretty much where I put it in that paragraph, is normally he says the park supervisor go look at it, but it looks good enough, and then they sign off. So, then I just, you know, add it in there. As long as the park supervisor and the highway superintendent both sign off, I'm fine. If there is some argument, then those two people can agree on a third person to come look at it.
Can't imagine there should be any difficulty.
I, I don't either, but I filled that in there.
Well, sure, no, I think, yes. No, it's good, good point.
But if that looks good to you guys, I'll send this out to Mr. Beckwith, that you have a D and C, if it's acceptable to him, and we'll go from there.
For me, thank you.
And then you had asked me to look into something last week, and I can't remember what.
Well, it's just, you know, when you're talking about the possibility of replacing the county dock.
Yep.
Would like to look at the way that, that we've been going, and who others' buildings or manufacturers were about, by the, you know.
I apologize, my mind was just wandering places.
Or at least more than two at that time, we were having.
And we have done that, haven't we done in the past? We just post it on the door to my hours and events.
Yeah, we can post it if I know what they're going back and certainly post it.
We have to show any minutes of them?
Think so, we haven't in the past.
We haven't, no. Because you're just, you're just, you're not making any decisions.
No, we're just, yeah, exactly.
One of the biggest topics out at the state's earnings conference was, of course, medical marijuana and the impacts for counties, municipalities. One of the big things that we're going to have to deal with for July first is potentially getting the stopgap ordinance in place, and within the next couple of weeks, I'll bring a draft one for you guys. But the broad stroke of it is, um, it becomes law effective July first. However, the Department of Health has until the end of October of this year to promulgate all of the administrative rules on how things are supposed to be done. And the goal of the stopgap measure is to prevent any licensing of facilities, dispensary facilities, until the rules are promulgated. So, I'll, I'll bring that in the next couple of weeks, and the reason for it is, the way the medical marijuana law was written, the county, if it does not cap the number of dispensaries that they will allow in the county, then anybody that passes the check with the Department of Health correctly fills out an application, pays a fee, has to be licensed. So, the stopgap measure would prevent anyone from being, being able to be licensed until the rules are promulgated, and we can make an informed decision on how many, if any, dispensaries you would, uh, well, I think how many, I don't think there's a ability to completely prevent it with the medical one.
Yeah, they have at least one, right? You have to allow at least one.
That's what I understood, yeah.
I haven't, I haven't read the thing quite a little bit, but.
The thing to do in the paper said too, that if a request comes in, just deny it on the ground that you don't have the information to come down till October.
Well, that's the reason for the stopgap, right? So, we have the authority.
Okay, okay.
And then they also, Sherry and I were in on the meeting yesterday with Chris Bonning District, and they also said, don't charge that person anything, you know, any fee at this point, otherwise you're going to deny them, and then you might, you know, go, have to go back and forth and pay them money back, so.
Yeah.
According to Luke, he just, he said, no fee at this point.
And then, yeah, the stopgap measure would prevent anyone even legally applying for the license until the rules are promulgated, and then that'll give us until the end of October to figure out how many we want to allow, where we want to allow them.
And does the city have, have a separate set of rules that they can do as well, or?
So, yes, the city will be able to accept their own rules for citizens, and then we would be deciding for the rest of the county.
I assume they're anticipating people flocking in from all over the country that have nothing to do with South Dakota, or?
That's kind of the thought, but I'm not sure how much that's actually going to come to fruition, if it's just the medical. If the Supreme Court rules that amendment A is constitutional and lets it take effect, then we might have a bigger issue with that. But with just the medical, I don't have people flocking in because it's not going to be as widespread as it was for the recreational. The Supreme Court heard arguments on amendment A late last month. Who knows when you're going to issue a opinion on it, so we'll, not until that, it'll be enjoined from taking effect until the court rules. But that'll be coming, about a couple of weeks, I'll give some to you guys for that.
Dylan, don't you think a reasonable parameter, one of them would be that this is, it's, it's going to be medical marijuana, it has to be prescribed.
Correct.
And, uh, shouldn't it be limited to, uh, existing drugstores that fill prescriptions right now?
That might get sticky in the fact that, um, if a pharmacy has any type of federal licenses.
Oh.
They may be able to.
Oh.
Because it's still illegal under federal law, so that's why there would probably be a separate entity dispensing just the marijuana.
Okay, okay.
Pete, you meant the prescription thing, I guess, I've heard horror stories, I don't know if it's true or not, but you walk in and somebody looks at you, what's your problem? Like, oh, my God, like, oh, my, okay, here's a prescription, you know, this is kind of a rubber stamp, everything you watch.
One of the, uh, rules that the Department of Health will be promulgating is a list of conditions initially that would qualify for a medical marijuana prescription. There is, in my understanding, going to be a process for someone to petition the department to add something to that list, but that's their thing to deal with, we won't have to deal with that. But initially, once the rules are promulgated, it's going to be an initial list of conditions that will be covered.
Should be interesting.
I think that's everything I have to say.
I have one thing, and I would call for an executive session to discuss personnel. Is there a motion for that by Carlson? Is there a second? All in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
You have a chair, Dave.
Morning.
How you doing today?
Get my D, Sherry.
I have my mask, it's on, comes in.
Oh, yeah. And it's already got his eyes. Yes. Sticking together.
Think so, yep.
This kind of summarizes a subject about, a thought on trying to do something with Savi Building, started back in twenty sixteen, and, uh, purchase agreement was almost signed in twenty sixteen, and then it, there were some other circumstances that required that it be revoked, and, uh, that was done, and then it went back to negotiation with the Cantwells and GSI, and put together a package to deal with it again. My basic position is, I'm not sure if the Cantwells were paying yearly taxes back in twenty fifteen or prior to twenty sixteen, I don't have that information. But, uh, on this, uh, summary sheet, I did, they talked about all of it, uh, there was a period of time in the year two thousand when, uh, approximately that time, the city assisted in, uh, apparently purchased the building for two hundred thousand.
Sounds reasonable, Dave, go ahead and keep talking.
Anyway, that, uh, was sold to the city assistant, the assistant economic development corporation, has that entity, I believe, or don't.
Sounds reasonable, I, yeah, I don't.
And then I think they sold to the Cantwells, uh, in twenty oh nine for a hundred fifteen thousand.
Two thousand and nine, yeah.
And then finally, uh, they were not able to make use of it as they intended, and said, kind of empty, uh, I think Neil Long actually was kind of taking care of it for them. And I haven't talked with Neil just recently at all, but, and eventually, the Cantwells should be selling it, getting out from underneath of it, and GSI being on top of it, could use it for some of these things, uh, in retrospect, I think it would have been probably more appropriate to, in, uh, legal terms, a innovation center that the federal government can identify as a, kind of five-one, C three, for business purposes. Innovation, that never happened. So, um, what we're looking at is, we never did spend any money on the thing we knew needed to be done. We needed to make sure the roof was intact and it leaked some places, and there's a little damage from that, but it's comparable. And, uh, most of those costs were rough, and for insulation, you have to look at at least fifty to a hundred thousand for insulating the roof and re-membraning it. And insulation, the building does not have insulation in it, basically, it's, it's directly, I agree the lack of this is, is, is structurally sound, and so it has value, but you can't tear the building down and then redo something, the land's not worth the cost of tearing down, so you're stuck, you can't use the building, and the land has no value, except where they can make up. So, for those reasons, um, when we took it over, we thought, well, we paid fifty thousand for it, what kind of, you know, are we going to be paying tax on this? We went to an exempt approach, and I think that was denied.
No, I don't think so, Dave.
I shouldn't say not exempt, no, that's better, yeah.
Okay, if we can chronologically turn the clock back a little bit, last, last year, when the subject came up, the, the communication that we got back is that Greater Siseton Initiative was willing to pay something, which kind of surprised me, being you are bona fide five-o-one C three. And so, instead of, instead of reducing the value, uh, it was my suggestion, well, why don't we make this thing eighty percent, uh, tax exempt, and, and the end result being the value of fifty thousand dollars? Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Sherry. But that's, that's, that's how we were able to, and now this year, the communication came back to us that they would like to be tax exempt. And there again, I said, well, they're a five-o-one C three, they deserve to be. So, as far as I know, you're tax exempt. Okay?
Well, uh, that's not quite my understanding of some of that time between last year and a little before that.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't recall much discussion before last year, so.
I think we made an assumption that the value realistically is probably fifty thousand, because it looks like it's worth more, but it doesn't have carbon, it doesn't have.
Oh, I would agree, yeah, I agree.
So, so I guess my intention is to just be here again personally, if I have not been, and, uh, see what can we do as a community to make that building somehow worthwhile for everybody. Now, it requires that we put it on the option block and sell it, that's an option of, and I think that's the only fair way to see what, what the fair price maybe is. But people have to understand, there's all kinds of asbestos tile in the basement, across the upstairs, we have two floors of asbestos tile, and I have to have somebody who's got a credit and to go ahead and do that. We took out a very small amount that was left of the asbestos tile in the old middle school this past year, and a local mortgage company gave it cost, uh, about ten thousand dollars. For about a five percent area. They said, oh, they can do it in the off-season time for them, but then we had a rollout in the alley, and they could just sit banging it, they would put it in a rollout, which you could take to the dump in Sioux Falls. So, there's maybe a hundred thousand dollars worth of asbestos there that the government says, if you're going to do something, if you're going to have to deal with it, and you can cover it with carpeting, you don't disturb it, but then you're left with all kinds of other issues, put the carpet down, so. So, that's, you know, kind of where I'm at, where, uh, we have paid one year taxes of about, I think it was seven thousand, because of last year, we still have, um, the first two years we owned it, we have to pay tax on it. I guess I was aware that we received a tax valuation, visited the tax, you know, and seeing a tax like that, it would suck.
You didn't receive a tax notice?
I don't remember, and I don't really remember anybody walking through it, but I was, I was busy at that time, and I was going to put it on a high priority.
Well, that's, that's something that we're going to have to research, on this end.
I think, you know, I don't think Sherry was involved initially with that, it was fired, but, uh, but whatever. So, you know, we would like to see it go, we do plan to have a public meeting about it, uh, to see what interest it can generate locally, uh, again. It's, it's got potential, but some of these things have to be dealt with. We got about four of the basement that needs to be thoroughly taken out, it's the old hole, original mechanicals are heating, we've got newer stuff from two thousand sitting on the roof, or air conditioning, heating, heat pumps, but, you know, after three years, doesn't work, it just checked out. It probably does, but again, the cost without insulating and, you know, like, um, that's an ongoing expense, and definitely it's, I don't do these things, but to decide what entity is able to take on that and give some tax incentives, uh, for business, or innovation, or whatever, but I think it's, you know, any sign of any of that really wanting to happen, because Savi is kind of saying, we better digest first, so.
Well, you know, you being a landlord, and this, this has been an ongoing thing for years and years and years, there's a lack of affordable housing.
Yeah.
And to define affordable housing, it's a third of a person's income, and, um... And, you know, if you can put the right combination of things together to get a rent subsidy program going for somebody that would qualify. And there again, there's, there's a need for affordable housing and whether it be apartments or whatever. That's an age-old problem that this community has had.
I think generally even the housing would require trying to get a second floor in there. The first floor, you know, is already partially ready to go for some business or political businesses. The basement, I don't know that you can use it for housing.
Yeah, it'd have to be underground parking and you've got, you've got a parking issue in that part of the town.
You know, ideally, and, you know, it's not too far apart, but people are taking old mines and running the sun and warehouses and growing vegetables. With LED lighting and such, the temperature change throughout the year doesn't change much in that basement. Nobody uses the rest of the building. How do you protect bioterrorism? All of those types of things is another concern. So lots of ideas are out there, but. What is Sisitun doing?
Good question. I, I don't know Dave, where, where we fit into the picture other than, other than the, the tax part of it. And like I said, going forward, we, we understand your tax exempt status, so that's, that's going forward now. Anything that was done prior to that, we've, we've got to do some research on this end. On what was sent out, what wasn't sent out, and all that sort of thing, so.
Okay, I don't think I need to take any more time, so.
Appreciate you coming in and going.
But questions come my way if you have anything further, if that's fine.
Okay.
Whatever you've got going on in the school, none of that would transfer over to this other building we're talking about.
Well, you're trying to keep that pretty separate.
You probably got tons of room at the school yesterday.
Yeah, we're probably just over there. We expect a good chance that America or, let's see, someone did the dirt on that, will come back. But that was delayed, it would be here now, but they are giving shots.
Oh, thanks for coming in Doc.
Thank you.
Do we have some questions for Sherry?
Well, I see Mark is on the agenda next.
Good job, you understand all that stuff that he's involved with. But, but yeah, we gave him exactly what they requested last year.
Just not as I could say.
Tom needed a few minute break, huh?
Got garden stuff put in? Sounds like last night was the last one.
Should be the last night of.
Sub zero, or not sub zero, but.
I haven't even bought my flowers yet, I'm planning to do them next Monday.
They keep looking at my trees thinking, oh boy, they're going to pop any day. And they're about halfway and then they shrink back and they open up again, shrink back. Probably all going to fall off at some point.
Probably.
You didn't defend me, I mean, we ran wrong. Do that.
Good day in the spread anyway, last week.
I'm pretty sure it is. Do you think popping up on your way or?
Corn, but in that field they planted weirdly about three weeks ago, it's got a sprout up there.
It does, huh?
Not out of the ground.
Oh, oh.
Oh, it just, it kind of went around.
Oh, really? Oh. Louis said, you know, when he got that big rain, that boy, we were in good shape there for a while. He said, nah, he plants, he's done now, he said he plants some stuff in the dry ground. So he said, we need a good, good insulator to get things going, it's a warmer temperatures too.
Boy, this like last night, it was white.
Yeah, I think now, I mean, it looks like it's sixties to seventies.
Did you get your frost?
Frost? Yeah, last night it was white.
Really?
We had twenty eight to be exact.
Yeah, well, I got those forty something, but.
Mine's a thirty four.
Yeah, mine said thirty four this morning.
Just as a quick follow-up, Sherry is going to get together with Mark and research that issue about whether or not tax statements were sent out or not sent out. See what's going on.
Remember though, they haven't paid those taxes from when I planned it, they didn't understand. The first year they came was like, like two years ago or it wasn't like, three years ago. They haven't paid your taxes in the past, you know, showing any good faith effort, why should we help you? But yeah, I remember last year having that conversation and discussing that letter that he sent at that time, so.
Good morning Mark.
Mark, good morning.
What's on your mind today?
Well, I've just got a couple of thoughts and questions for you guys. We have some situations in our area that we, I think we need to look at possibly getting some additional help in our office. Part of it being, I may be offered some medical issues. So, and also possibly Wendy might have some, but I mean, we're not sure on either of that, but. I know we have Christie as a backup right now, but I think we need somebody as far as more motor vehicle side of life. She's fine with the ultra side, but I think we need to get some additional help on motor vehicle side and also some for some property, looking into property issues. Part of that being, we have a hundred and fourteen properties right now that are four or more years in arrears. And I've been trying to get to those the last two years and it's not been able to be accomplished. Just for an example, I did a little comparison on the amount of actual work our office has done in the last, compared the last three years. In two thousand eighteen nineteen, we did four million nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in April. In twenty twenty, we did four million three hundred and ninety, or sixty one thousand. In twenty twenty ones, in April, we did five million nine hundred and sixty two thousand. And that would be the motor vehicle that taxes and the miscellaneous information that we had pulled in. So in comparison, we're up almost a million dollars in one month comparing three back years. The motor vehicle is up almost nine, ninety thousand alone. And granted, taxes this year have been a lot more paid earlier this year, the way it seems to me. It just seems like we're getting more earlier this year. But my issue is more that those hundred and fourteen thousand, hundred and fourteen properties that are in arrears and we're not getting to them because we have, I didn't go through and check out how many are more than six years because the state gives us, you're supposed to do it between years four and six. And right now, I know there are at least fifty of these properties that are on six and beyond. So over half of them are beyond the six years, which we need to address. And I feel that if we can address them closer to years three and four, we can get out of this situation of more years behind. Because it might be a situation where the trailer house is no longer on the property and they're still taxing it. I know I've talked to one person on this that has, it was in his dad's name and I tried to get him to come in and explain to me what is on with it. But it's more than seven years old and he's not in a point where he wants to deal with it. And so I think if we can get it closer to the timeframe where we're looking at it with additional help to see where we're at, that might be a benefit for, for the county. The other side of what I'm looking at is, the state is coming out with their new motor vehicle side of life. And they're implementing that in November, December. They're not sure, but the situation is, Microsoft is not supporting the platform that they are hosting our current motor vehicle system on. They've been working on this for two years or more. And they think they're at a point where they're going to be having to release it in November. And I'd kind of like to get somebody on board in case we have some issues. And we're also trying to register emails Friday, I believe, or, or information that they're looking at a website for us to go out and test. And truthfully, we have not had time to go out and test from what we've had so far. So that's kind of what I'm looking at, kind of the background of why I'm looking for it, so.
So these a hundred and fourteen delinquents, for lack of a better term, whatever you call them, they get a notice every year. Okay? And I guess they're just ignoring it apparently, huh?
Right. So in years four and six, this county is at the point where they should be looking at taking the properties from them and either trying to do something with it or sell it or whatever. So in saying that, I know I've had at least five calls this month on people that live next to properties that they're owing and would like to purchase. But we're not in a position where we have that property to sell it or offer it for sale either. And it takes approximately a year to get a property out of, out of an individual's name and into the county's. So that's kind of where that additional help would help in this situation to get that process rolling and working on it.
Part-time, full-time, how many hours left?
Temporary.
For me right now, anything I can get would help.
A permanent person or just temporary or what?
At this point, I would take a, a full-time temp person or even a part-time temp person. Something to get a starter, get a handle on this hundred and fourteen, just have an extra backup for. There are times where it could be just one person in office and that's not a feasible situation in our office.
The thought that referred to me, if it's something the board will go along with is to have Kim downstairs who's a part-time person. See if she has an interest in coming up, working part-time in the clerk's office.
Truthfully, I think that would be a good fit because she's already working with the
Properties.
Property side of it, but I mean, at this point, I'm looking for help however, whatever we can get.
If you had someone today, how quick can they pick up what they need to learn to be effective in your office? Weeks, months, days?
Motor vehicle takes months to years. We have the information, actually, they sent more information just from the conference that they did this last month. But from a personal standpoint, I am still at, I'm in here almost two years now and I'm still at a questioning Wendy and Janet on, okay, did I do this right or not? But we have, we work together in our office, so it is very helpful that way and it's very easy to work with it. But to start with, it is a lot of, did I do that right? And occasionally just makes sense off the back of the vision, but I mean, it's a learning process to get a motor vehicle. It's not a come over and, and, okay, you can run a title.
It's not prompts on the computer, just.
No, no, it's, and, and that's the problem with it is, I can tell you real quick, Jerry. They just sent something recently. This is just the motor vehicle divided and titled by by state, okay? This is just, they just came up with this. This is just how to look at where the title numbers are on each state's title. Okay, and that's just their current year state. South Dakota has titles that change every five years, I believe. So if you're looking at a South Dakota title, and you have to have the person sign, the, the individual selling the vehicle has to sign it unless by an individual lying in another spot. You have to know that individual so, selling is on the right side or not, just by looking at the title quickly. So, I mean, and each state is different. So, and we have had multiple vehicles in this last year that have come from New York, Florida, Arizona, Ohio, I mean, and each of those titles is a little different and it's a little, it depends on how you handle them, so. It does take a little longer to do the motor vehicle side.
You want to give them some direction?
I think I want to think about it for a while.
Yeah, you need a week or so or whatever to think about it, talk it over and see all the money situation. I think Dennis is a good idea.
Medical on my side is going to be happening anytime soon. I mean, it could be this week yet, so. I do know there's a, I mean, tomorrow that Wendy is gone and I am gone, but I don't know. I may be able to rearrange so that I don't have to be gone, I know she will be gone. She has a, I have a medical, so. So it will be coming, but I mean. So it will be coming, but I mean. Yeah, this is my side, yes, but we'll have to make do with how it is. But it's, it's not fair to that office to only have one or even two people at a time, because the last month, we have had people standing out the door with two people there. And it's, it's not fair, I mean, to do that to them. That's kind of why I'm asking for additional help, so that it's not just one person or two people there. Because truthfully, neither one of these two people have been sick in the last two years that I've been here. Even if it had been one day, I think one of them was sick and then they may drink. But I mean, that's a whole different story, so.
No, believe me, when Debbie was gone for an extended period of time, they stepped up and they went above and beyond.
Right, I agree.
And we don't want to see that scenario again.
And I'm sure they don't be very.
No, of course not.
So, but that's what I'm bringing forward, that's, and what I'm asking for, so. Whenever you can get back to me, that would be great, so. All right?
Thank you. We're going to need another session, yeah. Okay, is Pat around?
Peter's here.
I thought he, oh, okay, I thought he saw him lock off the door with the ream of paper under his arm. Hey, guys.
I've signed several documents that were baited, and the last one was an order to proceed. Are they mobilizing some equipment now?
Not yet.
Not yet?
How about the tin man, is he ready to come back? From the road, looks like he's blowing up over there. Is that right? Metal prices still up or?
Yep, that's what I got.
Going up.
They're going up?
I think it's called Granberg yesterday.
Yeah.
And then we, had these people, why do you sort it, about forty thousand dollars? I mean, you got quite a pile there this year.
Big pile, yes. The one you see is up front, there's a little more back in there, I can't really see it, but, uh, destruction.
I bet you got at least thirty, so.
Yeah.
Why we sorted, I guess, pretty good little check, thirty grand, I guess I'm gonna.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
How much?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Well, they're all doing, these will do well, I guess.
Let's see.
Here's what I'm doing. If everyone wants to get a think that, I'll give you some copies of everything. Documentation of, uh, one customer. And that's all I'm doing, to do for now, yeah.
Keeping a file on him?
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea. Yeah.
You have reading paper?
Oh, that is that?
I'll give you copies of that either.
What's that reference?
Subordination. It was interpreted to me, I didn't tell the person I gave it to. He did, uh, get it at the window. And, uh, she interpreted saying that in the states that were made become law on the subordination.
In reference to what, sorting the garbage?
I'm changing the stickers.
What does the sovereign nation have to do with it, it is between us and the hauler?
I have no idea.
I'm guessing this is his way of putting pressure on, getting them to write letter like this.
You see this come out of the text box.
Here.
I think all that whole works can go to the state's attorney, my opinion, but what do I know? What's the first and final one?
Color is it? Which color is it?
I'm pretty sure this could be nothing.
Two, number two.
Number two? Three, four, five, six, one down.
Yeah, yeah. Both are on the same one. Other than the else gone?
Yeah, pretty good, but she's busy. If you see why she is. They're doing awful right now. Hey, you better use the yell, take it safely on it. He's opening, smash it down the lower end, and you gotta hunt for it.
Like that construction down by Walmart, are you getting some of that to them or going to call it some stuff or not yet?
Not yet.
Bud, cut, heard any going now?
Um, I contacted him and he's getting an order and, uh, he said he's going to give me a call from today, so that no one's seen it right.
Good.
My heart's been always on that, and he's just like, damn. Especially right now.
This is just something you pull off the computer.
Yes, that's it.
There's no, there's no computer involved here, it's just, it's just a baseless threat as far as I'm concerned. I'd turn it over legally, let them hash it out. But yeah, we need documenting and everything that goes on between.
Right. I think it might be time to send you a state's property as well, but the farmer. I got state inspections after now.
Drive-by?
She's property, that's my even drives last name. I actually told you that, I mean, how many copies?
Huh?
That was your copy.
Oh, okay.
Is that the same thing? Oh, that's just your file?
It's the stuff that we go on.
I know that other thing is our copy also.
Yeah.
You got something more for him?
You guys got anything else I haven't seen off here?
I don't think so.
Get that, I'll give you a page, it's a little hard.
So you said you gave a copy of this to Peter Turner, no?
No, no idea, just.
I will.
This is the same company we use for picking up out at the highway department and the detention centers. That's what I thought. Okey-dokey, thank you.
Don, there is nothing attached there. I don't think that should be paid until we have an attached thing. You don't know what you're even paying for.
Do you want to use that time card anymore then?
No.
I know we bought it, but, uh, used. I think we paid that five hundred dollars for it.
But what's on that, those time cards and what's on your payroll things, two different things, so.
Well, and honestly, the original reason that that time card was put in because we were getting accusations, you guys were cracking out early, that's the reason the time card was put in.
You can still do it, but I just.
It doesn't matter for payments, it's just, yeah.
You don't need to bring new copies.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, you too. Yeah, Pat, we got up there.
Is it on there yet? That guy, Monica, lost it, it's dead, find it.
Oh, I lost mine the one time I walked back to the store and I found it laying on the ground right outside the door, right before the minute ago.
Six hundred bucks.
Tim, is this okay?
That is, they just put a bill in for the rest of it, this is just the climate, like, drops and stuff. I went down there, they did climate control it, went down, looked at it.
Well, submitted last time was called just an estimate, so that's why we shut that down, but yeah.
But, Kim, I sent it down to him and he sent me that out.
It is climate control and they actually did some on four seventy-third avenue on Sometime. They did a little sooty and then just hold it what he did.
They got a few more bills that will come in from September.
Okay. Is this landfill, do you think? Pick up all of this, uh, cylinder, pickup cylinders, technician hours and all the way.
Of course, they're testing, I'm guessing this, yeah.
Look at the other side, show you what budget it comes out of, and who signed it.
I guess this is all landfill because.
Road and bridge. But it's seventeen thousand dollars worth of.
Okay, Dennis, probably just in bridge, I bet. What they're doing out there, what?
Was that in on a stuff that was cryptic, no, the crypt together? Some of them are supposed to have copies that says, right here, yeah. Hand me copies of.
That's for the Eastman Bridge, then?
Yeah?
Yes, that way then, she sends it to Tammy and then Tammy, and just for the rebuild.
What happened to factory? Carrie Johnson, that one on the hard. Ever read to you, Johnson, Carrie?
I forgot to ask Dylan if he shared this with Pat, do you know if Pat has seen that?
I, I'm not sure, Dennis.
Okay. We'll have to give him one today.
Sure. I have two copies of the new ones. Did I look that down?
Yeah.
Yep, today, first day, today we're getting her. Morning.
Morning.
I figured Peter'd be in here for an hour. Ain't good to see you, huh?
Absolutely.
Did he do some changes though?
Yep, yep, he did, the, uh, paragraph A, number three, he revised that. And, um, then he added under paragraph B, uh, A, he added that.
So yeah, a third party would be, you guys, who would be the third party?
Well, we hope it doesn't come to that, I guess we didn't discuss who.
Just mutually.
I would trade or something.
Yeah, well.
I would think that would be good if we could just change it now, are you going to email him back? Or do you want me to email a copy or send it back, or then, uh, state's attorney, send it back?
Uh, how did that conversation end?
I think Dylan will send it.
Dylan will send it, that's good, I'll just talk to Dylan and see how it goes on.
You got to sign it, all right?
Well.
Yeah, just reading, then we can have some, then we can, no, we'll get a team, maybe you guys, I think that's a good one, you got to take care of it, you know, so. Okay, I want to pass this stuff on. We're talking about, uh, the cost of the trucks and this stuff here, or how far along is your order, you think? I got the information here. Just here, you pass it on, um, everybody can get a copy of that. Everybody get a copy of this one?
Thank you.
And last but not least, there's another one here.
Just one more thing.
Yeah, that's one more thing there. The big one is actually the bid that.
Did you get one of these, Don? Did not, he's got the, you know, I guess, cute.
The biggest one that I give you is, you know, it says an open bid on the Mac, it's quite a few pages long from Eric Hamilton, who transmits. Now, this bid was from Marshall County from a year ago, and this is bid for a whole year. And this is the bid we went out the time before, a couple of years ago on a Mack truck. So, you guys can look at that anytime, you get free little time. And that, what that is, is everything on the Mack truck, that the specs on that truck that we have the last couple of years. And that price.
You get one of these?
Yeah.
Yep.
There's four, I get, I get, I got, I got that, I got the, this, I didn't get that.
I think that probably should be with Pat, the one who wrote on it.
Oh, you guys get one of them too.
I guess one of those, did you get one of those?
Nope.
And I don't have, I don't have the big one.
You don't have the big one like this?
I've got the big one and then I've got Birch, you can have that one.
I don't have the big. All right.
You ain't got Birch either, have you? You ain't got Burt's either, have you? You got my Burt's or?
You can? And then the one that, Don, can you get one of the big one?
Sure, buddy. I'll go ahead and make one for Don.
Sure, buddy. Last year. So what we'll do is to make it simple is we'll look at the first page that I wrote on. We got, I got the Burt's one here with the whole prices of the new right here on this front page right here. It's got the, it's coming over the page for the road on it and stuff there. So the one truck we bought a year ago was a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars from the chassis. And then it was eighty-one thousand, one thirty-nine for Burt's, but all the equipment on it, okay? You got, have you followed me and they know that? Okay, now, the new truck is a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and went up two thousand dollars. And the equipment is eighty-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars. Went up six thousand, eight thirty-three. Eight eighty-three, and that was the one where you can look back at this one here where it says Burt's right here. This is where the equipment coin is for eighty-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars is on that page there. So that's all the equipment that goes on the truck from A to B, everything that needs to be done. And the truck chassis is a hundred and eighteen five and that was through Marshall County bid. So everything went up a total of eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars from last time. So technically, the truck only went up two thousand bucks from the last time we bid it. And I know that this can be locked in right now at that price. And it won't be delivered until January, February of next year because that's how far they are now. And then the equipment will, won't be all done until next spring sometime because of the steel and the metal and everything in that order now. If we lock it in this early, as they said, they would be able to get done by next spring. If we get the truck in January, February, get the budget ordered, it's gonna be all the way to next spring. So that way, we're still looking at saying your budget on, on twenty-two budget, which now is the order. So with those papers, we'll give you all the bid items on the truck and the Burt's will tell you the equipment. And this front page that I just posted is what the breakdown is. And I talked to the state guys this morning that does, knows all about the bidding on trucks with the state. And last, last year, they had six by six Max, which is a little different. They have, you know, all six were back. They ordered so many of them. And they have the brown tank, the sander, the, all their equipment. That was two hundred and eighty-five thousand for them. But they were getting freight liners, what Detroit's, they're having a little trouble with emissions and all that. Twenty-twenty price is about a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and fourteen, but that's, now, I'm sure that's gonna go up about four, five thousand also, see? So you're looking at not much difference from the price we got to whatever they're getting. And now we got that price yet. There's more to get on the price, but I know not a lot is gonna go up. Right now, we'll get, of course, they put more equipment on there, so that'll be, I'm assuming they're gonna be, not close to ninety thousand in their trucks. They have more quick. But you can kind of compare it to what Burt's is. And it could have maybe got another quarter coming out of safety services I have a day, but we've been using Burt's for the last five years and they've been really good. And, you know, they're comparing them and they do really good.
It is really slow.
They last year was slow. They had so many North Dakota trucks and Minnesota trucks that we got nine last year.
But you get this year now.
Oh, you go, I'd be for it. And that's why I wanted to jump to them right away now and say, hey, if this thing's gonna work, we gotta get all of them. Everything is going up. But they said you would keep the truck locked in, but that truck are already going up, but Kerry is gonna keep it to this bid from here.
What are them old trucks for? The two you wanna trade in?
What's that?
The one, two you wanna trade in now? What do they got?
Well, there's three old ones, the truck six and eight and ten are the ones we gotta deal with. Then right to the outbreak, six and ten, I'll, but what I'd like to do is put them on Purple Wave. That's, um, uh, Sioux Falls Purple Wave, you know, it's an auction company. And I tell you what, you get a lot better price going through them if it doesn't cost people to sell it. Goes on the other end. That's what would have to be done though is sell them all then. I know that then sold the, the older blade on there a couple of weeks ago and now I'm getting all of them for one of his old blades, so.
I do think you did pretty good on that.
So I think that's something they're all able to look at it a few years long, Purple Wave. I had talked to him a couple, three years ago, but I got put up behind him for it. He has a bunch of other counties that are too.
Several of the marketing companies you should go with.
So on that front page, you know, with the new price, it was two hundred and seven thousand would be the total price of each one of them would be for one truck. When we financed last year on the one that we got the last time, truck five, the cost was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, thirty-four dollars. While we financed, our payment right now is forty-two thousand, five twenty-eight oh four. And that's once a year. And then we got the payment on our, on our blade, you know, and that's twice a year. So we got the three payments now. And this is the payment we're going on our truck, it was truck now. So it'd be similar to that because what we did is finance everything with the equipment and the truck together through state bank in Kansas. And that was through Transcorp.
And then a five, five-year deal then.
Yep. And so we closed now at those three point four two percent interest at that. But that's what we're paying now on that one that we're doing now, so. Just wanted to give you that information, so. If I'm gonna move forward, like I say, you know, we talked to us, you guys are pretty serious about thinking about what to do. And this is basically the numbers I have to get for the new truck to be covered up for a new year.
Yeah, you can do what interest would be now?
No idea. They would think that how much?
It hasn't gone up a decent amount. I think it, well, you said mortgage went, went down. The number was, I mean, again, least mortgage rates, so, I mean, I think.
I have a feeling, I have a feeling it would start going up, you know, but I don't think these would go up that high for county, you know? Because county entity would get one of the rates and if they can get it, usually, you know, we buy equipment between three and four percent at the most, you know? I think I have from the back of one of our blades, um, we made a lot of interest here a few years back. Yes, it wasn't, I guess. It was pretty reasonable, I guess, a few years ago, it was two point nine, I guess. Uh, yeah, way back when, when we got our first yard near that one, that was four point zero five percent. Now, like the years ago. But, you know, I don't see it going too much higher than the old three and a half percent. I don't, I don't know that. By the time we get it done and by the time we get delivery, then what you do, the finance, you see the flow, then that's when, you know, we end up finding out.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, the guy might wanna watch. I don't know if he unlocked that in or something. Right now, you can't get that guy any cheaper there right now. We don't know. They're gonna be, who knows where.
Is this an extra one, Don? Everybody got one?
Actually, yeah.
But I know the other trucks that are out there is not, three miners, easy job, but not as terrible as the Mac compared. The Macs got their own drive, transmission. We had Allison and ours, we think. Mac drive. Pretty solid truck. It must've started when it blew up.
Damn solid, dude. Very good trucks right now, you know? Started at nine, about seventy-eight years ago.
Those other three that are there, we've got so much money into them. And they, they're old and we need to just sell them outright, get around them, make them start out maybe next year. This is, that's the number of them, you know, we've got. Like you say, this truck was already got out and yet, you know, last year, so we got a bill to go on there.
Is the, the truck that blew up, is that in the shop now or?
Yeah, that's been up in fire, and they're going through it. Haven't heard anything yet.
Oh.
So, and they're talking about going through it, see what really happened and why it happened, so it might be a breakdown.
You think the company might stand behind that?
No, that might, so maybe on that one, I don't know what they're gonna talk about. I don't know what's gonna be, so. For sure, running on it, I don't know. They definitely told me on the phone to do it, but I haven't talked to them since last week, so.
I think we need to get one ordered and it'll be nine months before we see it.
Yeah, I agree with you there, Ted. I, I still would like to see a firm quote from another truck company. If we're not gonna give them, we're not gonna give them. I, I just, I hate to spend this kind of money without seeing what the competition is selling their stuff for.
Yeah, the freight liners at a hundred and fourteen, they haven't gotten, they're going up, they have to stay.
I mean, I'd like to see a firm quote.
But they said last year's twenty-twenty year was a hundred and fourteen, so. I know we got all freight liners at the fire hall and they're all big trucks, but they're not gravel trucks in my mind.
Well, they, they must, they must really get pounded because the over, over the road trucks, they'll, they'll go a million miles or like that.
Easily.
Like that one that we bought with twice the mileage than the one that blew up.
Yeah, all of our trucks should be going there too. All of our trucks should be.
Bought, bought a old truck for twenty-five thousand and all you get is a new engine for forty.
Yeah. Well, I think it is definitely over the road if you knew you're putting, you know.
Just like the state, they're on asphalt all the time. They hardly haul anything on the road. Hardly get no shit while you're out of it.
Right.
All year round, you know?
Remember, we started buying seventy, he went on coming to buy with nine hundred thousand miles on him. And then you didn't put any money into it. You just, you just drove the damn things.
We got the semi going yesterday, hauling up the valley dump.
It worked just fine. It rolls all the way down, no problem. So it's a damn rough ride, but it runs bad.
The blue and white one?
Yeah. Well, that's because the airbags are smaller on it and it's a different train. I mean, it's gonna ride it up. It's got power and, you know, it does the job real well, so.
Good, good.
But, you know, you can dig apples and apples, oranges and oranges, I don't care. You can talk to any other counties and they got the same trouble we do. If you run out there and be in the, and be in the summer part and that gravel and all, and it's just gonna be hard down and it's just a lot rough. You're gonna grab on the road and be on a big highway, it's, there's no comparison. No, that's for sure. But this is, this is not even on the, on the line, you know, this is.
Yeah, I, I would guess.
Yeah, it always can go cheap.
Marshall County probably did their homework and shopped pretty good to find a, find a decent rate. To me, that, I mean, I don't, I don't buy trucks, so I don't know, but.
Here's the deal, all the counties.
They're a ton of money.
Whatever counties are getting bids, that's what everybody looks at and everybody can try to, and not gonna be a cheap bid for the year. The state might buy a hundred, hundred more trucks at a time. It might get a little bit, you know?
There's no down payment requirement or anything. If you place an order, they.
Nope, it's all good. No down, that big thing is when the truck is below, so. That kind of job was minimum when we paid, you know, so much and jumped when we took the Burt's. We have to put the equipment on it and we financed everything, so it was already done before we had the equipment all done already, so. And that's the way to do it.
The way metal prices are going.
Well, when he did this.
Computer chips and everything else, and by this time next year, you'd probably add another.
When he was doing this code on the code, he told me, he said, everybody, I was doing the code and I got down with one part and I got some email. And this one up and that one up, then he got the next part, so he said, you got another email, this one up and that one up. Even like the wood, like in the lumberyard, three days a week they get a new price. Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday or Friday, they get three, three times a week they get a change in new prices on lumber. And that's kind of what the deal is here. We got Bebo boxes out there, which is a little bit hefty duty for like rock, I mean, that's why I love them. That's what I've been doing for us five, six years, you know? You come out of Canada and you go Canada and you're stoned, you can get a cheaper shit box than we used to get. And that's why they all get all powdered off and that's why we don't buy that no more. We buy the AR five hundred steel or four hundred steel. Because if we are in rock, they don't need to do that much more damage for what we need to, so. It's just things like that that would happen. It's not that, it's the vastest of things. It's just the stuff that we need to do. So, anyway.
I need to motion to place an order for that. I'd like to find out what the current interest rate is and if it's reasonable, can we lock it in at this point in time to, to cover us nine months down the road?
Well, I'm not sure Eric told me. Said I'll lock this price in just for.
Well, no, not to fight any of the, any of the.
I can get an idea from this.
I doubt they wanna lock that in, but.
They won't lock it in, that's all we know for sure.
The rate's never gonna go up.
This court's good for now, but if you wait too long, the courts for that equipment's gonna keep going up.
Well, the bigger thing, I think, you gotta, you gotta get the queue. We're not gonna, we're not gonna get anything.
Get your place in line, yeah, that's true. All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Carlson to move forward with the purchase. Is there a second?
Purchase of one truck.
We'll have some additional discussion if there's a second. Second by example, more discussion? So this, this would be in twenty twenty-two delivery, first part, February or November?
Yeah, this is due January, February for the truck, guys.
And then are you going to use an existing sander as well?
Yep.
The old sander?
The sander that's in the truck, that we, you know, replaced with all of this stuff. So we're good on sander.
All right, good. Any other questions, Pat, on that? All in favor of that motion, signified by Senator I? Opposed, say no?
Oh, she carries.
Today we got asphalt next planted from the plants moving today, so we're up by somewhere right now in the north of Omaha. So today, so we keep working on that this weekend, we're working on it tomorrow. We did talk to the company with the wind towers. They're pretty much finished, other than.
The one wind tower that burst up?
They have to wait for the components to rebuild it. We have Tony Kerwin and I, the superintendent, him and I, we went up and had a meeting last week. We're talking about the haul road and, uh, the main road on asphalt road one hundred and twenty-seven, you know, between, between Summit and Old Easter State over to Condo and thirty. It's been damaged quite a bit in an area that they got gravel and everything, and we're waiting to hear from them. Uh, we told them what we wanted and, uh, we expected some overlay on that road and get it fixed up. And if they're still, um, doing an assessment on it, they're still waiting to hear back on what they're gonna do there, so. All the gravel roads that they're on and all the approaches that they've made, they're gonna be taking that gravel off and shortening those approaches up. And the gravel will go on to that existing road, whether it's County Road or County Road. So they're gonna be making those eighty-foot wide ones down about forty-five. And then those will be narrowed up, that'll be thrown onto the road, so that'll be where that comes from. Not the way else so far. If there's any issues or questions you have, I can relate to. One guy's gonna be leaving, the other guy's taking over. One guy's gonna be leaving, another guy's taking over, another guy that was in charge of all the doodle equipment went out to Texas. So there's a lot of things going on there. Hopefully they get that one dollar down, that's the key.
He didn't indicate when they were gonna bring them online, did he?
They're already going.
I saw some turn, I didn't know if they were online.
Yeah, they're all producing right now, except for like if one's not running, it's, they are all rolling. So, but like you're saying, we got the current set up and you're supposed to be getting that other one down and getting the components for that one that broke. Which is right off.
I wonder when we're gonna see some revenue off of, off of those?
I'm not really sure. Yeah, I don't know.
Certainly should be this year. I mean, obviously, if you fired up in twenty one, it should get revenue.
I don't know who you guys talked to about that, because you know, that whole company that you guys have talked to. You know, they were fired and other people, I mean, I don't really know who you know, but.
You mean David Law is not there?
David is there, he can catch up from a long, maybe, but otherwise he, you know, he might be a start, but nowhere near the top to what we're talking about. So, yeah, we're filling that, we're playing it as we speak and stuff and, uh, the bridge on the eastern road is going really good up until now. We have to do the approach and look at the other end of the gravel and approaches, you know, we're getting that back in right now. And we, uh, actually the bridge contract, we're having some contract, Serakki be doing, because they couldn't finish that.
So, I mean, the, the bridge was here in the, you got the space in between the road and the bridge and that's being filled in now?
Yep, so Serakki's are doing that, they're gonna put all of them, they're blending them in, getting it all sub rated, getting that done. And then they're gonna have to do the painting, because it's gonna be so white. And I already said, we gotta have them paint it for us, so once they get that, expect them to deal to you. Everything's done. And once we get it painted, then they gotta come and do the railing after we get it painted afterwards. And I don't want to open the road until railings are all.
Right, yeah.
And then the signage is on.
Still looking at the bill.
So we can hopefully at the end of the month would be the purchase, hopefully, so. If everything goes good now, then now we're coming in the next couple of days and ten or nine, we'll get, we'll get the plan, if everything goes with the plan.
Took two to four weeks.
Yeah, I would say by the end of the month, we need to get the rail calls, ten or nine, we're gonna put the rail out. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. We did have a hundred fifteen thousand dollar payment today on, it was a company that does testing and then the bridge company, they have paid a car ninety eight thousand too, so. We have, uh, no, I can't think of what it is, we don't have too much left to pay on the total, but now we're gonna get my own for these things this week. We reimburse that eighty percent. Should be getting about two hundred thousand dollars in here, so. At least we've been getting it paid back right over here, back here. So that's the market really good, so. Other than, I guess, I don't have any right now.
How about that groomer, that groomer?
Haven't heard of them, they said two weeks, I don't call them half there, I don't call.
It's been a couple of weeks.
Call them at the end of the week, I figured they'd see how much they got on the whole, and come and visit us, so. Otherwise, then the gravel, the town to road, I was gonna tell you, maybe towards the end of the week.
Oh, perfect, great.
Caught up with some of the stuff with the pouch, you know, I was gonna hit that down there. So, get that plated, get that in there, hopefully that one will do it.
You know where eastern township ends and the other one starts? We don't, we don't go all the way to Blacktop. I guess they have to negotiate with whoever they want to go.
Just the intersection, did they?
Well, the intersection, it goes, you can see where we grade.
Yep.
It is probably about three quarters of the way to the Blacktop.
Yeah, I think they kind of know.
There's a, there's a approach right there. You can see where the gravel stops on the side of the road. Yeah, they, they don't, they don't take care of the road at all, so I guess that's up to them to deal with, you guys. But, yeah, you just hit there and, and go all the way west until you got your ten, twelve loads down. We typically don't do continuous.
Now, what do the.
Yeah, we, then we'll blade it all out, so it'll work out.
We'll try to blade it up a little bit and then we'll kind of see.
It's come back quite a bit, he's graded two or three times now, I think, and it's come back. It was looking pretty, pretty bad, pretty bad for a while there, yeah, but it's looking better. Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you.
He's trying to make a dental appointment up here lately. Oh, hell. They called in and, called in about two weeks ago, so, wow, about the September. Then they had cancellation, so I got it in right away, but they only have like one, one hygienist left.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. And I had a tooth that needed some work just, just before the COVID thing started, you know, so I did go and it's been fine up until, I, I went to saw the dentist on, on Wednesday. Friday night, he was a piece of pizza and the rest of that tooth broke, so. Probably have to have a full crown for that.
Morning.
Morning, here.
Reach for the van.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, so today's census, we're at sixty five. Last week, you know, it was here, we were fifty eight, and you can see the daily count in the last week, uh, on the right hand side there. So we were up over, we did hit seventy two over the weekend.
Wow.
And, uh, had a few bleed in the last couple of days with the bombs and whatnot. Our Marshall numbers are staying about the same. They typically, anytime we've had anybody that we've asked them, um, for whatever reason to get out of our facility, they usually come and they trade us one for one, um, put somebody else here, so.
Kicking up troublemakers?
Yeah, yep. And that usually, that just tends to be the case. We'll have a group inmates that are doing really well and all of a sudden, some will come in, like a shake of pot. And we'll, James will call the Marshall service, explain what the, what's going on. And then they make arrangements to come, usually within a week, um, and remove somebody and drop somebody else off, so. That's kind of how that's been going. The old business, I, I did get a quote back from Pat on the gas tank. And this came from, they opened in Fargo. This must be who they typically use for their, um, gas tanks and pumps. And the invoice came to, uh, what was it? Five thousand eight fifty seven, which.
How many janitorial tanks?
A hundred. I think it's a thousand.
That's, that's brand new equipment?
Yes, and, and that, and one thing to take into consideration too, is that's not gonna pay for the pad. Uh, we have to put this in that, this is my still pad, I, I imagine.
And electrical, I suppose, like there and everything, so. Can you, do you find any of them at auction, huge stuff, or?
You can, I mean, that sounds high, I mean, I guess I'd just direct to Vigs or whatever.
That's what, that's what I kind of thought when I saw that. I kind of looked at that number when I saw that and knowing that it wasn't with a pad or electrical, and I thought, oh, you know, maybe there's some, just some changes that we can make, uh, to get by without it for a while until, since it's not an urgent thing, maybe we can wait till we can find something that can.
Would that require a containment barrier too?
I think it's something, if it's a thousand gallon, I think it's two thousand, fifteen hundred, you know?
I don't know.
I'm not sure. I, I know we got, uh, at the farm, there's a thousand gallon tanks, most of them, they don't have anything around, but the one big thing they got for diesel fuel is got a.
Yeah.
Got a dam around it.
So I don't know, maybe, maybe it'd make more sense to, to look at, you know, maybe the, the rules or regulations are different, different sized tanks. Maybe we can get about, why, get by with something a little bit smaller, you know.
I think that would be fine, I think.
Oh, I think that's quite fun, yeah.
But I just wanted you guys to, to have that and, and, uh, we'll kind of, if anybody wants to kind of keep their ears open to things that they might hear.
I just wanna say, ask border states, you're right, man.
Okay.
We, we buy an awful lot of fuel, like you said, we buy an awful lot of fuel from Vigs. And I, I would think they would have access to it. I know years and years ago, if a farmer committed to a bulk company, they provided them a tank. Not that we would, not that we would go down that road, but I know Ellsworth Oil had access to tanks and if you committed to buy oil from them, they would, they would actually lend you a tank or give you one.
I'll, I'll take a look, I'll take a look at that and see what kind of other things I can come up with.
Yeah.
I, I agree, when I saw that, I was, I started to say, I don't know if this, if it's.
Save enough money to have to pay for it.
Yeah.
But I would just say, could use it, because I know a lot of farmers are going to like, half the transport, they get a good prices up. So they're giving up their five hundred thousand gallon tanks and putting in, you know, twenty five hundred, bigger than any, I guess, something like that. So I don't know if there's an abundance of used stuff out there or?
I'll take, I'll keep a lookout and I'll.
I'll ask. Border states can be good, because I mean, people are trading them in all the time.
Oh, yeah, probably, yeah. Do they have the tanks and the controls too, or?
Yeah, I mean, they got.
Yeah, 'cause I, I think the, uh, the pump, the pump apparatus that goes, that goes on there, the pumping meter is a thousand dollars just on the phone.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Uh, we had our A-ride training, uh, last week at the Assistant Police Department. Uh, we had, there were about six police departments from our corner of the state that were there, including the Highway Patrol, from some highway patrolmen from all the way down to St. Paul's. That A-ride training, did I explain what that was last week? It's advanced roadside impairment, uh, detection. There'll be a, a small article and a picture of everybody that went through the, the, uh, the training, probably in the paper next week. I just have to get that stuff over to Kevin. Just since last Thursday, when everybody who was in the class graduated, our deputies just at the Roberts County Sheriff's Office have taken three impaired drivers off the road that were impaired by something other than alcohol. So, pretty quick, uh, return on investment as far as keeping other drivers on the road safe and even the drivers that were taken off the road safe. For new business, uh, we have, Janessa just submitted an application for the twenty twenty two Highway Safety Grant. So we're gonna be waiting to hear back on, um, the fund for the Highway Safety Grant. I got some, some dollar figures in the, in the next paper that, um, we'll kind of show where that's at. Uh, and then the other, the other grants that just came available, I know you've heard me talk about the COPS grant, uh, when talking about the contracts, trying to get the contracts started down south and up north. The COPS grant has just come out, it'll close in June. There's a COPS grant, which is a hiring program to, you know, increase the size of departments. And there's also a school violence, uh, prevention program, grant that is out as well. Um, when going around to a lot of these rural communities with schools, they've been asking for, um, police officers to be inside their school. Not necessarily the full-time project, but, but to have some time there and creating some relationships inside of the schools. That school violence prevention program grant is gonna be awarding about fifty three million dollars and about a hundred forty million dollars for the COPS hiring program. Both, both are thirty six month grant programs. So, in most of those programs, what it would consist of is, um, year one, the grant program, uh, provides seventy five percent of the cost for that employee. We'd be responsible for twenty five, then it's fifty, fifty, and then twenty five and seventy five. And when going around and meeting with a lot of the municipalities and bulkies, bulkies contracts and getting those departments started, uh, the initial, the initial upfront cost of that is always really, seems really high to go from, you know, not really allocating a police budget to all of a sudden saying, okay, now we're gonna look at spending forty thousand dollars of our municipality budget on a police department. So this is really, in, in my opinion, gonna be probably the best way for a lot of these, our municipalities in Roberts County to get on board and say, all right, now I can start looking at our, our fiscal budgets over the course of the next three to five years and figure out if, if that's something that we can be a part of.
After you reach this subsidized portion of it, are you obligated to then carry on for so many years, or?
No.
It's just through that subsidy, that's it, okay?
After that grant period is over, that thirty six month period is over, you do not have an obligation.
Hopefully you realize the value and you can find a way to keep.
And, and that's one of the things that, that when I've had these discussions with a lot of the municipalities, I've said, I can, um, I can almost guarantee you by the time that three years is over, you're not gonna want them to leave. And part of that falls on us as, as police officers do, you know, doing good work in their, in their communities and then seeing the value in us being there and being in their schools and, and all of those kinds of things, so. It's not just a, it's not something that I'm asking for them to give us money and then they never see us still.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, but it's something that is gonna work on both ends, you know, the municipalities and even the surrounding, even the surrounding rural areas around those communities, uh, are gonna, are gonna benefit from having more law enforcement in their area. Because, but you've heard me say before, but our, our response times, depending on the time of day and, and day of the week, it's almost heartbreaking sometimes to, to see how long it takes us to get to something that can be a really serious situation.
Sure.
They're just wanting it to end, so.
One more question on that, Tyler, do you have any idea what the criteria is of, you know, how, do you get points for population, points for high crime, and then there, they?
The, I, I've been talking with, uh, Sarah McGregor at Roberts County a lot. Um, I think she's more than likely gonna be our best option for, um, writing these grants for us. Um, she has the expertise to look at the, look at both, the demographics of our area, the needs of our area, putting those into, putting those into a grant that specifically addresses some of our problem areas. So that when we're asking, we're, we're asking for these funding dollars, we're asking to help us in specific areas. And typically, that's what the Department of Justice wants. They wanna be able to, to, you know, clearly see the impact that their funding dollars are going to. The same thing kind of happened with the body cams. With that body cam grant, you know, they're always asking for, for numbers and things like that. They wanna be able to specifically articulate, you know, exactly what kind of impact is created on the department. How many lawsuits is saved, how many complaints have been, you know, either proven or debunked based on the, uh, the hardware and the money that, that it went to. So, being able. So being able to kind of come to some specific, who to devote. What, you know, if, if we do get the funding from a COPS grant for thirty-six months for a police officer, what is the impact that it's going to cause? Is it going to reduce crime in a specific area? For example, in the last four months, up until May here, we had a hundred and twenty calls for service in the Rossell municipality. Which, when I heard that, I'm like, huh, that's a, that's a lot of, those are calls for service, not traffic stops. Those are people calling and, and either needing something from the sheriff's office or needing a deputy up there. You know, you equate that out, that's a call of the day, and we're running up that, running up that way to help somebody or something. So having somebody, you know, more designed, designated to that area is going to hopefully reduce that call volume.
Sure, yeah.
Can you, or are you applying for both?
Uh, she, when I visited with her yesterday, she was going to look at both and the specifics with both. There's a lot more specifics for the school, the school violence program. But from my experience, the, a lot of, a lot of departments are more hesitant to start school resource officer programs. So I would anticipate the funding for that maybe being, we're in a smaller school. So it would probably make us more apt to, to do that. We would actually be able to still, you know, we might, if it fits us better, we might put both of our eggs into the COPS grant instead of the school violence program. Because even with the COPS grant, I mean, it's twice the funding. But starting something like a school resource officer program or a cops in schools program will move you to the higher portion of that list and make you more eligible. Because when you're writing that grant, you're going to be talking about reducing crime. Not showing up after the fact and arresting people, putting them in jail. You're going to be talking about how, how is this going to impact communities to reduce the overall crime and reduce their overall crime in the county. So, uh, I'll give you more, I'll give you more updates on, on that as, as it kind of develops. But it'll happen relatively, relatively quickly because the grant deadline ends in June and just came out last Friday, so.
This is fair on that statement, right?
This is, yeah, this is fair, yeah. This is how the school resource officer program assistant got started.
Okay.
Same, same, same grant. And I believe it was Watertown Police Department just increased the size of their department by three officers last year using the same grant, and Tidic County did their department by two or three as well. So it's not uncommon for rural self-tota to get, to get grant dollars from us. The last thing is, we started kind of a conversation last week about deputy wages. So I, I grabbed, I grabbed some numbers just to kind of try to help everybody get their head wrapped around kind of where we're at and where we want to try to get to. At the top there, I have an executive session for this, or?
I think we're okay.
Yeah, I can keep, I, there's, I don't even. Roberts County population at approximately ten thousand three hundred and fifty people. Our current wage budget is at about four hundred and eighteen thousand, and that covers four deputies. Marshall County, these numbers are from 2019 and they came from the sheriff's study. They have a population in Marshall County, about half of ours.
I see that.
And their deputy wage budget is six hundred and sixty-eight, almost six hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
What you have listed here, just the total, you know?
I took the.
Is it what you do, social security, withholding, health insurance?
Yep.
Very good, okay, very good.
And then Day County's a twenty nineteen population, about half of ours, theirs is at about three hundred and forty-four, with four deputies as well.
Does this also include your wages and the sheriff's wage?
This one, this one does, yep.
All right.
So I took this, I took our four eighteen, right from our, the, the budget that gets handed to me.
Okay, so the top section.
Yep, yep, and that's including, that's including all the sheriff's wages and the insurance and the reimbursements and then unemployment comp and retirement.
So actually, the sheriff's wage itself should be added there, I think. Because, because is it?
Well, that's why, that's why I was asking, if, on all of his examples, if the sheriff was included, you know?
Better picture, because the example is, we may be paying only fifty thousand for your wages and Day County could be paying seventy-five thousand, you know? I mean, there's a difference there. I, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I just.
Yeah, the Marshall, the Marshall County Sheriff ran out, getting about eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, see, I mean, that, that's not going to.
Excuse the numbers, yeah, I see that, yeah.
So we know if we took theirs out of there, would be much, much less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be about fifty, be about fifty-one.
Plus the health insurance and, you know, so it would be significant, so, yeah.
But theirs, I imagine, I, and I imagine theirs is included in there, in there. And then on the, the next section there, I, I used the sheriff's study to take a look at other counties with similar population to ours, where, where ours would fall. And you can, and this is the same thing, this is the sheriff's wage included, this is their, this is their sheriff's and deputies' budget. So you can see there that what some of the other department sizes are, what their wage budgets are compared to their population. And then I also included the, the city assistance in there, you know, they cover our population. And, and I only use population for an example to just be able to understand the amount of people that, that we're trying to serve. Assistant with, you know, two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight people at a wage of twenty dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. Have six officers and, and a yearly wage of approximately forty-three thousand dollars. Below that, I put ours. What are, what ours is currently on the left and what, what I think would be a realistic proposal on the right. I know it, I, I know looking at it, it looks like a significant jump, but I think you'll be surprised at how insignificant it really might be as you, as we look here. So the current, the current cost for all, for all deputies, and this is just their wages, their hourly wages and mine, at, you know, two thousand eighty hours a year, is costing us about two thousand and four dollars, or two hundred and four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. The proposed increase to the wages that, from where they're at now to where they would go would be about two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred. So that's a difference of about thirty thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars over the course of twelve months. Now what we have remaining this year in this current budget.
Okay, I have a question. The figures you have here, is this, this base salary and does not include longevity?
It would not include, it would not include longevity.
Okay.
The only reason I didn't include that is, is.
It's only starting.
Right. I would propose that instead of using a longevity scale, I would, I would propose just a cost of living increase on a yearly, on a yearly basis so that we never have to go through this conversation again and we just continue to stay on, on track with where the rest of the, with the rest of the state is.
So you're saying you do it with the longevity increases?
In my opinion, in my opinion, yes. Right now, we are, you know, they're just not working. One of the things is, like, if you look at our longevity wage right now, you have to work thirty-seven years to get paid the same as a, as assistant wage.
Well, and early on, many years ago, the first I worked with, first district, we were just talking about salaries a jet, well, not specific to your department. And he said the same thing, get rid of that longevity pay, give them the money upfront.
Yes.
And then you work off cost of living after that, which to me would make more sense.
And right now, like, like I kind of told you last week, when you started talking about this, we have officers that want to be here. And they're wanting to be here over a five dollar pay increase in a town closer to where they live. I mean, I think it says a lot about the direction that our, our sheriff's office is going and, and the direction these police officers want to go. And I just think it's, I don't know that, that twenty-five cents or fifty cents more on your wage than you can get for being here, you know, five years versus three years, is going to make somebody say, yeah, now I really want to make sure I stay on. I think if we stay, I think if we look at a, a cost of living increase on a yearly basis, and it's probably something like three percent, the, the effect on our budget would be so, would be so small year over year that financially makes, makes more sense. And it's something that the officers can, can expect every year. You know, hey, I, you know, here another year, I'm just going to stay on track right with everybody else. The changes that I made in, in the, the hourly rates on the right-hand side, for the chief deputy, there was a, I, I put a twenty-five cent increase on there for his additional responsibilities. And the bottom one, the one F line, that would be our uncertified.
Oh, okay, I was going to ask about that.
And I, I know that the, just as an example, I know the city police department uses about a dollar discrepancy between certified and uncertified. I think with putting our wages up to right around that twenty-two, twenty-two dollars makes us more, gives us a better incentive, especially when hiring, and it gives that, that uncertified officer a little bit of kicking their pants to say, all right, I'm not going to sit around and wait to get this testing done. I want to get my, my wage up there and I'm going to take it on and not leave. Otherwise, otherwise you might have somebody that's kind of hanging around for like a year, waiting to get certified. And it helps us to start to determine, hey, is this the police officer that we want to stay on our department? Or, you know, if they don't pass their certification or their reciprocity testing, we know right then, hey, are we going to put an investment into this person or do we just cut our ties now?
So again, this, this bottom number here, that's strictly, strictly the wage, no?
That would be, that would be twelve months at that current, and that's how different it would create.
Yeah, but, but no FICA increase, no, uh, retirement, uh, I think because when we looked at that number last week, Tom, it was, it kind of jumped up to about forty grand, didn't it? And FICA, and then there are seven. Yeah, yeah, okay, that just might be clear, that's all.
Yep, and so, uh, so I went purely just based on that and what we would have left in this, in this year up until January. And so what I predicted is if this was to start in June, we went from June to December, it'd be an effect on our budget somewhere around that eighteen thousand dollars. Currently, where we are with our, with our budget for this particular category is we're at about twenty-one percent, which is including the overtime hours that we are paying, which when I figured out, we're averaging about seventy-two hours a month in overtime. Which is significantly less than it was the last several years. Um, so we are paying about two thousand dollars in overtime a month. So one of the things just to keep in mind is yet to come in before September is our Highway Safety Grant from 2021, which we cover about ten thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, and we're waiting for the approval on thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety-seven on our Highway Safety Grant for the 2021, 2022 year.
And that was both for the used force, the salary?
Yes, yeah, they, they, they're used to pay for the overtime hours. They, they do an overtime match, so any, any over, well, I'm saying, but usually, usually we estimate for about forty, forty to fifty hours a month of overtime match hours based on our, what our wages are. So, I, how I figured it out is the, you know, the projected addition to the Roberts County Sheriff and Deputy Wage Budget would be right around eighteen thousand dollars. After the addition of the 2021 Highway Safety funding, that would decrease that by about ten thousand dollars. The projected impact is somewhere between about seven thousand and ten thousand dollars per budget. For something that, this is just my opinion, is going to save us a lot of headaches, a lot of the revolving door of officers, and probably save us a lot more dollars in the long run. Anybody have any questions on that?
I just, like I say, obviously knowing that this table disputes the value of the proposed increases and it, and the need for it, it just always comes down to the budget and that would be the.
But how can we not?
Well, I understand, and I'm not saying I, I wouldn't, I would support this, I'm just saying that that's what always comes down, is the budget. The, the, the need is there, the value that you guys provide to the community is certainly there. Uh, the job you guys do is, is outstanding, and I think anyone would dispute that.
And, and something to, something just food for thought is, you know, we already have, you know, a lot of interest in increasing our police presence in Roberts County, especially our municipality, that's one hand. You know, with the COPS grants that, that I think we're going to be more than eligible for, you know, our patrol division may increase by two bodies in the next, in the next year. Without it really having much of an impact on our, on our budget. I think that, I think that's a pretty significant, pretty significant thing. I would guess that the most significant impact to our, our budget would probably be in the form of vehicles, which falls under equipment, under the, the grants as well.
So this is your projected impact based on yourself and?
Yes.
Does not include one or two that you're advertising for?
Uh, it doesn't include the one that we're advertising for from the standpoint of, we're going to lose, we're going to lose one in June. We're going to lose a deputy in June for training. We're going to lose another deputy at the end of July, beginning of August for a baby. And so.
You did one deploy and two, didn't you, or something like that, or?
I didn't, I didn't anticipate, I didn't anticipate a big change in, in wages in, in that time, so.
The one we're losing for a baby, is that just temporary, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Do you have no, one under deployment or something like that, too, or?
Uh, yeah, we'll have one leaving under deployment in November. Well, he's, he's doing his, he has to do a month in June, he'll be back July second, and then he'll be leaving for a year in November.
Who, who's that? Oh, that's, no, sorry, go ahead, it's Dylan.
Yeah, we're lucky that it wasn't, we're lucky that it wasn't both of our National Guard members, it was just one.
Well, you certainly get an A-plus for, for your presentation and homework assignment that we asked you to do. So we, we've got another personal matter to take up later on today, so. so.
All right.
We appreciate, appreciate that, Tyler.
Absolutely.
Maybe Tyler wants to see the city, um, targets with the Human Service Agency of Watertown, hoping she can do, maybe talk to you.
Yeah.
You might, you know...
I would welcome it, too, because I have a couple of things to say that might be helpful to to...
No problem. I have no problem sitting around.
Very good. Are you done, then, Tyler?
Yes, that's all I have for today. Unless you have any further questions.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Carrie, sorry for the delay, but...
That's okay, we're ready to meet and sit down. I'm Carrie Johnson, and I'm the Executive Director of Human Service Agency. I think the last time I was at one of your meetings was right after I got this position, and then last year, Bill, it was a different year for all of us, so.
Sure.
Um, so last year, we did not ask for an increase, given COVID, and, uh, everybody's probably financially standing with the pandemic. Um, right now, Roberts County gives to the Human Service Agency, um, a total of about fifteen thousand ninety-four dollars, and we are just asking for a three percent increase, which would be about four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Um, we give nine hundred and six of that to our New Horizons program, which is our community support provider. Uh, twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty goes to our behavioral health program, which is includes emergency and detox, uh, projects, and, uh, no, sorry, which includes, um, crisis management. And then thirteen hundred fifty-eight goes to Serenity Hills, which also includes our detox facility. Um, we do have some upcoming changes, one of the reasons we're asking for an increase now. The building where we have, um, we have Serenity Hills is sold, is being sold to a church. So we have gone out and we've looked around for a new building, that's not been, um, we have found, so we're going to build on our main campus, and that will be right out, right on nineteenth. And when we do that, we're adding four safe beds. So right now, if a person is in a mild crisis, we have twenty-three hours to determine what we're going to do with them. Are we going to permit them, release them with an opination plan, are we going to maybe help them go to the hospital voluntarily? When we get these four safe beds, I'd also apply for an RFP to the Division of Social Services to become what's called an appropriate regional facility. If we get that, um, RFP, we will be able to hold individuals in our safe beds for up to five days. So that will save money on everybody's county trips on down to Yankton or O'Vera. I don't think we guys do any of our part, I don't think we cross state lines, um, commitments, but, so you just bring them to the Human Service Agency, um, and we hold them maybe for a day, but up to five days, and maybe we would do a commitment right away, depending upon their needs, but we would hope to stabilize them within five days and then send them back to their county, um, residence where they where they call home. And so we're hoping to get that. The building will hopefully be done late summer, early fall, 2022. Um, yeah, it's been a little tougher, of course, right now during the pandemic trying to get materials, as you all know, building is probably not the best timing, but, um, we needed to do it, and I'm very excited that we can expand it coming. We'll still have detox available there, too. I did ask prior to coming up here in the past, in 2020, we served two hundred and fifty-five individuals from, uh, Roberts County. Now, we have an office here, and I am sure it's staffed in that office right now. The Monica Meyer Pankow moved to Oregon, Cody Cannon was our case manager, and she took a job elsewhere. So we're sending people from Watertown up here, but we we have been advertising for a long time, and we think we have made an offer, and we have made an offer to another applicant. We're just waiting to hear back if she accepts that offer, so we can have our office staff again full-time. So we're always looking, and the use of Zoom and telemedicine, that's been very helpful for us, too, to try to fill in some of those blanks, because we lost our knockoff concert on medical thing, medical condition, so that's why we have, I was telling you, when we have a fully paid building up here, we have a full-time support staff and then new providers, so we're working hard to get that that emptyness. Questions?
I don't know.
What did you say with the current, what the county is currently providing?
Paying, yes, financially, um, a total of fifteen thousand ninety-four dollars.
In the, in the increase for...
An increase would be four hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is a three percent increase.
How many safety beds do you have right now?
Probably, we only have one. Eventually, in 2022, we hopefully have. And we do, we currently have four detox beds.
And this is in Watertown?
This is in Watertown, right.
Okay.
Carrie, so where do you base that fifteen thousand ninety-four on? Population or...
You know, I did, I did ask our CFO about all, so we represent sixteen counties, and I'm not exactly sure with, how they derived at that number, or why they allocate it to, how they have it allocated to our New Horizons Community, my house, and Serenity Hills. I think it's just been an amount that was started a long time ago, and they just increased it over the course of time, but I would imagine it is, is initially based upon, um, population. Obviously, our biggest giver is Cottington County, and then Roberts and, uh, Roberts and Clark are pretty close, no, sorry, Cottington County, Grants County, and then Roberts and Clark are close. So I would imagine it was based on population.
My only input would be that the increase of going from one state fed to five would significantly be beneficial for our for our area. The other, the only other option is to drive the far end of the state for us, so having more capability in the area for what's a relatively, relatively small increase is probably going to pay for itself almost ten times over.
Your, um, the emergency room up here does a lot of your commitments, so I don't even know, I couldn't even venture to guess how often you transport them down to Subols and Yankton.
Since since we started the, uh, the virtual behavioral...
E-care.
E-care, um, it's significantly decreased.
Oh, okay.
But it's still, it's still frequent enough, I would say, we're heading that way two to three times a month, one way, if not having to go down there two or three more times to pick that person back up.
And what I have on frustrating, because I, I'm a KMHB, so I facilitate involuntary commitments on individuals, what I have on frustrating is they quickly turn around and send them right back.
And that's fun, then.
Yeah.
And that's, that's typically from what what we've seen, too, is, you know, even somebody in the middle of a behavioral health crisis can can fake it for twenty-four, thirty-two hours, whatever they need to, to get themselves kicked out of there. Um, you know, you mentioned being, what, several, several days are able to be...
In the new facility, it would be up to five days, yeah.
I think that that would, that would provide a lot of service, too, because then you're, then you're able to really see what somebody's personality is and, and, you know, you're able to observe that crisis over a longer period of time, make a better, make a better recommendation. And then in lies us not having to be right back out at the same residence, going through the same process all over again in twenty-four hours.
Yeah, twenty-three hours is just not long enough sometimes to get to that plan, and a lot of, some of the crisis can reduce in a few days, like you're suggesting, and it is, it is frustrating when they send people down to, it's, O'Vera is worse than Yankton, well, they turn around and send them back. And so that's very frustrating, because we start way back, like you suggested.
Why aren't you, why aren't you at this, we, that, this increase?
The increase, you know, I, I, I'm a little unclear how you probably do it, so whatever your new budget here would be, I would say what we'd ask for.
We would, we would budget for that increase for 2022.
We're using budgets later, now let's buy some camp, whatever.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And then last year, I think I did, I can email, Coin County, Hamlet County will request that we, um, every month do a tally of how many residents we've served. Um, I can certainly do that. That's not really always what the county money goes for, usually those individuals are served by, you know, could be Medicaid, insurance, or state funds. Our county dollars just go to serve a lot of our, their detox facility and our crisis services, because those are often unreversed, because we don't have identified any in these scenarios.
Well, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate what you do.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Happy day, Tyler.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you so much.
Look at that, right back on schedule.
Mark is here from the railroad.
Hey. We were just thinking about that the other day, I don't know why. I guess I saw Danny Dig, and he was kind of involved in that, and I thought, oh, what's going on with that, so.
Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Sure.
Um, so last year, um, Roberts County sponsored the Build Grant Request to upgrade the rail line from Sistin down to Millbank for twenty-five million dollars, that was the grant request. And it got lots of letters of support, we got letters of support from the local legislators, from the system, off finally on date, um, the elevator, et cetera, and worked with the South Dakota delegation, and it didn't get, it wasn't awarded. Uh, we did get feedback from the US DOT, they said the grant was very well-written, it it checked out all the boxes with, uh, benefit analysis and all those kinds of things, uh, but at the end of the day, they said, you know, uh, we would prefer that gets sponsored by the, uh, South Dakota DOT. Well, that's wonderful, however, uh, in the legislative session that just concluded it here, uh, the legislature passed twenty million dollars for the, uh, Rapid City Pier and Eastern, to rebuild that rail line from pier to Rapid City, and part of that legislation is that it's required to have a federal grant. So when I went to South Dakota DOT, they said, uh, sorry, you kind of got aced out here.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking, well, I don't, I'm not the type to give up. This year's, uh, program has been changed, it's now called the Raise Grant, has the same elements as last year's Build Grant, but they've added two elements to it, because it's been a change of administration. One of the elements that they've added is they they wanted to serve an underserved community, which, since the trial is one of the customers on the line, I think that kind of fits that box. And the other thing they want it to be is, uh, reduce carbon emissions. Well, railroads are by far and away the most efficient land transportation, and, uh, so I think we would fill that box out as well. So why I'm here today is I'm wondering whether Roberts County would sponsor again in 2021 a Raise Grant for, uh, the Sistin Millbank Railroad. And we worked on, um, when the actual grant had to be submitted on the computer and all that, and our person walked through with that, and it worked out well, I hope.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
You guys wrote it, we signed it, pretty much, right?
Exactly.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't cost them.
Right.
All right.
So, uh, if you're okay with that, I would like permission to, your guys' approval to sponsor it.
Is there a motion to, by the board to proceed? Motion by Zempel, is there a second to that? By Carlson, uh, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, good.
You guys have any questions, as long as you got them here? Okay, well, we're still plugging away, we haven't given up on this.
Well, I think we will boo this community, is that what they get approved on, yeah.
Right, right, well, it would really be good, so if it gets approved and it gets done, we can actually market, you know, because right now it's at blocking speed, it's hard to market that, but if we get it beefed up, and what I like about Sistin is you're so close to I-29, we can get a lot of stuff in here much more cheaply by rail. The Sistin got to have the infrastructure to do it.
Sure.
Well, very good, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you for all your efforts, appreciate it.
We'll keep plugging away.
All right, all right.
Thank you, Mark.
We'll be in touch. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want to take a look, right?
I want to knock you over, I'm in the bathroom.
Have one go down at a time, that's good.
So how do they audit it to come?
Oh, okay.
And then, then this is the, um, the 4H for the special license.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For the HAMIS benefit.
Oh, okay.
And then here is, I just need your signature on the bright start clerical, and that's pretty much a given, what we get.
Okay. I don't need board action for this, do I?
No, no.
Take a print, sign up here.
Here, this is...
Okay.
And then here's the equalization.
Okay.
So I, I need your signature on the back page on two.
All right.
LT one and one, Carrie, assemble in with your abstract.
Okay. Back page on this one?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for putting it all back together, yes.
That's what's sent on.
I have to, oh, I can't find it. Do you have the exam? So, this is, this title number for that vehicle, do you remember? But you're going to, I can tell you, like, for your vehicle, um, you have to give your folks whatever, whatever, decide anything you make, and then it can, it can be taken in, and you, I don't want to register, I mean, just like, sure.
All right, thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Very far, please.
Please try it out.
Okay.
Is there a lot of light for the meeting?
Pardon me?
Is there a lot of light for the meeting?
Uh, no. Nope, not very much.
I didn't know those, can I like one of their folds? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Take a look at that.
I can figure out the jacket, I can see it's got a few, my lover, we're going to get a check back. No, where it is, so, hope some air to that, of course, and she, nice and straight, but it just didn't see much of it. So I'll get a little Watertown, if I find a sprayer this afternoon.
Will it kind of pull behind you, or?
Yeah, it's like, I, the one I have is a fourteen gallon, but up to a twenty-five, thirty gallon.
Running, it's had some sprayers outside.
Did they? I should look there, then.
I think so, I think they should.
Yeah, we can, that, Menards and Tractor Supplies should have something, I guess, but... I, geez, the one I had was thirty years old, I just realized, I thought, oh, we want the little plastic switch that switches it from the wand to the thing in the back there, turn the switch and pull it right on my hand, pump wouldn't hardly run in, and say, well, it's time to break down and get something new.
We have trouble with our...
On the rollers.
How do you like that?
It doesn't, it isn't as good as a sprayer, but you don't have to really go over sprayer, you know, or it's got something to do with, or it's, you know, if you stay far enough rate, you want to just have it, so I just follow and look at it.
What is it, just have the thing in the...
It's just a, it's just a tank.
Just breaks it off.
It's just a tank that you, you know, it runs out into a PVC pipe that did your whole whole thing, and you just open it up, and then that drips on a roller. You know, our, our works got something like four or five, it's a, I, you know, if you stay far enough to rate, you want to miss half of it. So I didn't bother and look at it.
What is it, just half the thing in the?
It's just a, it's just a.
Just breaks it off.
It's just a tank that you, you know, so it runs out into a PVC pipe that did roll full, all the time. And you just open the valve and, and then that drips on a roller. But we got like carpet on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I've seen, yeah.
So it just holds up that carpet and you go and just pull it on.
Well, that'd be good. Would be nice. I mean, I'm always worried about the weather, man. Get up in the morning, they over spray it. And every time I make my walk in to eat lunch, it's like, oh, here comes the wind.
Drive right up next for, for farmer's herd and not be worried about spraying.
I've got my, pretty much well enough. I can just buy a spot spray two, three times a year, not have to hit the O V R.
What else got you, huh? Motion by Zempel to pay the claims. Is there a second to that? Aye, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kerry's. Um, the auditor's account with the treasurer is circulating or is it not circulating?
You haven't seen that?
No, I just said, miss.
Sometimes you don't want me to see there, Kim.
They said, said it passed him. I seen it, he said, so.
I thought it went around this way.
He kind of did. Don wasn't here. I gave it to Fay.
Oh, okay. Just like to see that one, the one point two million, that's good enough, maybe.
Everybody seen it?
None we have, yeah. Is there a motion to approve all of this account? Favor guilt, is there a second? Johnston, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have a temporary alcoholic beverage temporary permit application, um, for the four each building. And, uh, that's for the Katie Anish benefit. Does anybody care to see the application on that? We made approval.
And we did get the, the agreement signed, the, so, and we got, and we got the two dollars for the last two years.
Oh, there we go.
It was a dollar, so we got a tax of two dollars.
We were just talking about that. I was wondering if they could get a liquor license for that, because, I mean, when you're doing a sign on the option, I mean, there's, you make all your money. When you're selling liquor, get the guy a little wound up and they get a little aggressive into bidding. Been there a couple of times. I have a, a six-foot-high cob of corn I bought in a corner. I said one time, I don't know what I do with this, and a sharp, but who wants a six-foot, six-foot-high wooden corn cob? I got one. Give you a good deal on it.
You could start selling seed corn.
What kind of corn?
Seed corn.
Well, seed corn, I would call it.
You could become a dealer.
You should run that by those guys. They'd love to buy it. I could probably make some money on that.
Oh, no, you get started. You know, it'd be a good sideline for you.
Got all the work I want right now, which is not very much.
Set it out in the corner all the time.
Who's doing the liquor sales?
The, uh, Tracy's.
Is there a motion to approve the application? Carlson, is there a second? Simple. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I'm abstaining from voting.
Okay.
I'm just going to abstain.
Okay. Minutes will reflect that. All right. Anything else before we call another executive session to discuss personnel? Nothing else, all right. I'd entertain a motion to, for executive session to discuss personnel on a couple of issues by Carlson. And there's a second by Johnston. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, before the, what are you doing after?
Just a, just a journey right away.
Just a journey? Okay.
So then you, you won't be coming back down there?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
All right, sorry to hop back in on you guys, uh, right before we end, but I heard back from Game Fish and Park.
Oh, good.
They're fine with the changes. And so if we want to approve that quick, we can get it signed. I can get it sent off and we can put it to bed.
Okay. I just shared it with our highway superintendent too, and he just verbally read through it. Read through it verbally said, I'm fine with it. So we should be, we should be good with that.
How many copies do you want?
Uh, after he's, after Dennis signs it on behalf of the commission, then any approval, make me a copy and you a copy.
Yeah.
Because then I'll probably mail the original to them.
Sure.
Yeah. You, we need a motion to approve the Game Fish and Park's agreement, uh, twenty twenty-one dash five five dash zero one. Is there a motion from the board to approve that? By Zempel, is there a second? Favor guilt, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Just a heads up, you're going to get a letter from, uh, that was addressed, I guess, to our landfill guy with regard to, I don't know, self-taught lawyer trying to sue us apparently. So you can look forward to that.
I will make you the copies and later on this afternoon, I'll bring you.
Yeah, just bring me back the original and then a copy.
Yeah, but I mean, I'll bring you copies of all that other.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you all. Thanks for having us.
Motion to go home?
Motion to adjourn? Oh, by Carlson. I'll tell her, I guess. Is there a second to that one?
Okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Next week is.
We're adjourned.
Huh? Next week is.
Who adjourned?
Me.
Me, second.
Okay, next week is, uh, what do you call it?
Zoning.
Zoning. So you said Runnings had that yourself outside?
Well, I.
I, I've never seen.
This last year was brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs.
Yeah.
Can't you sign in assist to living and memory care? And Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time.
All right.
Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels.
Yeah.
Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.